To call this regular meeting of the City of Corleville Council to order August 10th, or excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, July 27th, 2021. Roll call, please.
That's Mayor Foster.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Wynn. Dodd.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present except for Wynn, as is the mayor, city clerk, acting city administrator, city attorney, and several city staff in the audience. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number four is the item on the, on the agenda for citizen comments. This is when anyone in the audience would like to speak to us tonight about an item that's not already on the agenda. If so, please approach the podium. I see no one coming forward, so we'll move on to item five, bonds. This is two items for refinancing of existing bonds in order to capture savings and interest costs. Our finance director, Tony Rotland, is here. I'm going to let him do a little of the explanation first, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, items five, A and B have to do with a refinancing of the Brown Deer Golf Club Bonds, the 16B1 and B2 Certificates of Participation. That's just a, an abbreviation for a different kind of borrowing. And then, probably, we should talk about the item C separately.
Okay. Okay, this is, the first one is the refinancing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to us tonight?
No written.
And no written. Okay, apparently not. So I close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution taking additional action to enter into one or more amendments to a lease purchase agreement thereto in connection with the Brown Deer Golf Course, setting perimeters for sale, approving purchase agreements, official statements, and other related documents, and authorizing conditional call notice introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Gross.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Wynn absent. Okay, item C, Tony, I'll let you explain that one as well.
Sure. So, we also all mention have Tim Oswald from Piper here as well, if you have some questions for him. But DA Davidson today did the final steps in pricing or refunding for us, and it was the 11F bond issue that financed the CCPA facility, Plaza Fifth, and we refunded about 4.9 million in bonds, with about 4.8 million in bonds, so we lowered the amount of debt ever so slightly. We refinanced 4.5% debt with 2.5% debt, which saved us, in net present value terms, about $270,000. And, and so, that's, this is the one in a long string of refinancings we're doing this summer, and, and, you know, if you have any further questions, I can talk through those, or we can have Tim give some information as well.
Okay, let's, let's have the resolution first, and then I'll see if there's any questions.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of annual appropriation, urban renewal tax increments, revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021F, pledging to the payment thereof funds and portions of taxes subject to nonappropriation created pursuant to the authority of subsection 2 of section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Are there any questions, comments? You're off the hook, I guess. Roll call. Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Wynn absent. Item six is Forever Green Heights, Phase One. Kevin Olson, our city attorney, is going to speak on this because Dave Johnson, our community development director, is on vacation this week. I'll let, I could read the comment, but Kevin, I'll just let you go through it.
Yeah, so, the first item up for, for review tonight is the PUDB site plan and the final plat for Forever Green Heights. If, if you remember, we've already approved the PUDA rezoning and the PUDA site plan, which laid out the lot, which laid out the lots and the roads on this, on this property. So, basically, what we're doing tonight is we're looking at the final plat, and we're also looking at the, at the design of the homes that will be done in Phase One here. So, Phase One will be, include 51 single-family detached residential homes and 38 units of two-family zero-lot dwellings. And then also, on the south edge of the property, the, the, they will be dedicating the park ground to the, to the city on the south end of that property, along Rustic Ridge there, as part of this development. As, as Dave said, he did use a drop box because there, there are numerous, numerous different designs of the houses here that were included in units, and it's a big drawing. So, I was just going to show you this part. I know it's a little, little bigger. Let me see if I can move out a little bit, probably not, because I don't know what I'm doing, but. The zero lots on this are going to be in the, the lots that are numbered 52 to 71 there, and then the rest of the homes will be the 51 lots of single-family dwellings on this one. As you can see from the, from the drop box, there are, for the zero-lot units, there'll be, each design will be used no more than seven times for 30% of the times. No two identical houses will be next to each other, and for the single-family dwelling units, there'll be 60% ranch units and 40% two-story units. And then there will be some, some lots where they can accommodate a three-car garage on them, and those will be built there too. So, what we, what we had done there is we'd asked that they bring some designs forward so that we didn't have everything look like a, for lack of a better term, cookie cutter or having all the same units. There's going to be a lot of units out there, so I think they've done a good job of, a good job of responding to our requests. So, the planning and zoning did review the, the site plan and the final plat in its July 7th meeting and did vote for approval by a six to zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Item C is a public hearing on this PUDB site plan and the final plat. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and are there any comments? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Caleb Smith. I'm with McClure, representing a developer on this project. Staff report is actually very thorough, did a very good job of outlining what this project is. We're pretty excited to get this going. Obviously, we've been working with staff on providing significant variations and elevations and colors to create some diversity and character in this development, and we're confident that the, the product we're proposing now will start to do that. One of the things to keep in mind is there are five outlots in this plat as well. Those will be coming, hopefully, before you here this winter to drive on some different product types here that are currently not in the plan, and we will start getting a lot of real diversity in this project once all those phases kick in. We have a developer, representation from DR Horton here as well, to answer questions. We've been through this quite a bit, but certainly happen to delve into anything we want to talk into.
Sure. Let me just close the public hearing, then I'll open it up for discussion by the council, and any of you can respond at that time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us during the public hearing? Any comments?
No written comments.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Forever Green Heights, Phase One, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Now, discussion.
I just was going to say that I really appreciated the attention to the way the, the different floor plans and designs were going to be kind of distributed throughout the development. I know that was a concern that we heard as we were, you know, having the discussions back in January, so I really appreciate that attention to not repeating the same design one after another. So I really applaud that. I am curious about the park. I know that we had had some discussions about that as well back in January. Do we have ideas, or will that come from the city? I'm assuming that might come from the city.
Yeah, the, the part of our development agreement was they were going to do some preliminary grading work for us to set a place for parking and stuff like that. They also did, prior to this, let us move in our emergency services siren onto that park, so we did move that already. I appreciate them letting us move that in early, so it was ready for storm season, so hopefully we don't have to use that. But, so Sherry will come back with a plan for what's going to go on in that park at a later date, but they, that, they are doing some preliminary work for us as part of the development agreement.
Awesome, thank you.
And I believe that several years ago, the Parks and Recreation Department did do a study for the potential out there for the park. And also, I would note, planning and zoning did approve this six oh.
You mentioned that.
Did it? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It's good to hear it again, though.
And the price point for these properties is, is going to be, I mean, we were on a page of a clear commitment for affordable housing, just make sure that hasn't changed.
Yep, and honestly, right now, pricing is tough.
Right.
Materials are very difficult to price. We know, like, on the zero lots, the slab units, they're going to start around 265. The base, ones with basements, about 285. And the builder did note that as of January of this year, probably would have been 20,000 less than that, just purely just because of, of materials. If the materials continue to come down, you know, we'll see, but it's really hard to say right now. I know it's a, a thing that home builders are struggling with.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And while you're there, what, talk about the timeline of construction and so forth.
Yeah, so, we're, we're moving along with construction. There's a couple of little details we're hammering out with staff to kind of finalize some of the last details on the paving and intersections. Once we get through with that, our goal is to be done with construction here this fall, trying to get lots, or houses going in some of those lots this year, and hopefully have some houses for sale early next year.
Great.
Where else do you have DR Horton?
DR is building all over Iowa right now, honestly. They've got, they've got some, some developments in this, this side of the state. They have a ton of, of lots they're going in, in the Des Moines market, specifically in Ankeny, and product is selling very well, seems to be going over, it being received very well by the market in every location they're in.
Sure, yeah.
The closest to here is West Branch.
Oh.
They acquired 21 lots in West Branch, and they've already got seven houses closed, framed upside down.
Yes.
And it'll be very similar to what's built here on the southeast side of the golf course if you look at it.
I'm Jeff Segan with ATI Group. We're a real estate brokerage and land development firm out of Ankeny, and I'm representing DR Horton, and I'm working with them in several markets, but in the metro Des Moines area, they're in pretty much every suburban community within the metro Des Moines area, including the city of Des Moines. Here, as Matt alluded to, we're in West Branch. We also are working with Matt on a project in Tiffin, Piawatha, we're looking at Cedar Rapids, and so just expanding throughout the area. This year, I think to date, there's about 400 houses that have been built and sold by Horton in the Iowa Division, and the Iowa Division is based in Des Moines, headed up by Josh and Seth Moulton, who sold their successful home-building business to Horton about four years ago. Next year, and they're on a fiscal year, fiscal year starts October 1st, they're anticipating 800 houses in the Iowa market next year with a good, you know, not the majority, but a good number of them starting to come on in eastern Iowa. And it's going to take a little while longer in eastern Iowa because we're just working on raw land, getting it developed to the point where we'll have lots to build on. So ultimately, though, I'd say they'd be looking at 1,000 houses with probably somewhere in the 300-plus neighborhood in eastern Iowa. So it's going to be a very significant part of the growth of DR Horton as they develop communities for families.
Do you anticipate pre-selling some, that people can have some input into?
You know, actually, they offer a number of different plans that you've seen, and they do have an opportunity with the sales representative, working with the potential home buyers on different options that are available for the homes. Right now, pre-selling has become a little more difficult just because of the experiences we're having in the increases in prices, as Caleb alluded to. So oftentimes now, we're not releasing a house for sale until it's actually been all the way to the drywall stage, because at that point, you pretty well know, you know, what your costs are going to be, so you know how you can price it for the market. So thank you very much. We look forward to being a part of the Corleville community.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Wynn absent, and item E is the same project approving the final plat.
Resolution approving the final plat for Evergreen Heights, Phase One, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Wynn absent. Okay, moving on. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item seven is Lot One, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition. This is a project, I'll just briefly describe it, and then Kevin, you can elaborate. This is a project we've talked about as a council several times for Hy-Vee Lantern Park, the Hy-Vee Number One, as we like to call it here, to build a commercial, Hy-Vee Isles Online Pickup Kiosk in the parking lot, basically. Kevin?
Yep. So this is a rezoning for the Hy-Vee lot to put this kiosk on here. This, this kiosk, unlike if you've been to other Hy-Vees, this kiosk is actually a more permanent structure on the lot, a lot of the lots, and we had a temporary structure on, structure on the lot last summer, or during the pandemic, but this is more a permanent building-type structure, so this is the second building on this lot, so this had to be rezoned to a PUD. As you can see by the, by the drawing that's up on the computer there, the, the Isles Online structure will be pretty much straight out from where the pharmacy and the drive-thru location is there, and Hy-Vee worked with the city engineering staff. This, as you know, this parking lot has some traffic, traffic issues as in circulation in the lot, so Hy-Vee worked and, and worked with Dave Johnson and the engineering department to come up with this, this solution. Scott, can you just describe how the traffic flow is going to work through here for us?
This is Scott Larson, a city engineer. So, this has actually been an interesting project on both sides. It's been kind of a collaborative effort, you know, for those of you familiar with the parking lot, there's always been challenges to, to make things just a little bit better, and it was no different this time, but it was really kind of neat how both sides really contributed, I think, to the final solution. So, Kevin, if you could just move the mouse over the actual kiosk itself, it's the white rectangle, to the...
You're...
Maybe, here, let me, I'll just step over there.
Here, you take over, you take over.
So, right here is the kiosk. And let me zoom out here. Okay, I'll, I'll leave it like that. So, the kiosk is here, the food is carried out from inside the store and delivered into the kiosk. The gray represents both some new pavement that they have to replace, but also a lot of median and island work, and of course, pavement markings, restriping to help people get where they need to go. So, the Isles Online traffic actually needs to make it to this point right here, and then it, the visitors drive north in one of four lanes and stop and get their groceries put in their vehicle. So in general, the circulation is northbound, past the kiosk, and then they exit right near the, the pharmacy. One of the things that we did talk about early on with the Hy-Vee group was, originally, the, the flow was the opposite direction, but we felt like it was important to try and eliminate the potential backups right in that same pharmacy area where there's that jog in the main east-west driveway. So this kind of eliminates that potential. So anybody coming from the 20th Avenue entrance, they have several options, of course, but one option would be to just turn down and come to the south end of the parking lot and then loop in right here to enter Isles Online. If you're coming from Highway 6, you come in right here, head north, and then take a left, and you're right there as well. And if you're coming from 22nd Avenue, you can turn down this first aisle and then turn right into Isles Online. So all the exiting traffic through, for Isles Online exits to the north. And there are some median changes, it's a little hard to see here because we're looking at this in a, in a browser, but there's some median improvements here that if you're going to the convenience store, coming off of Highway 6, instead of making that immediate left like you do now, and it's really a, kind of an awkward intersection, the way it's set up, instead of making that movement, those drivers will continue, as if they were going to Isles Online, make that left turn, but then just continue past the Isles Online right into the convenience store. So, they still will have an exit lane from the convenience store right back out to Highway 6, so overall, we think it's going to be a, a nice circulation pattern.
And just to finish up here, this will take up a, just by having this here, this will leave the site 38 spaces deficient from what it's required under the zoning code, so part of the development agreement will be that they're not going to be having other things in the parking lot, like big tent sales and all that stuff, that will be prohibited by the development agreement in the future because we're already taking parking away here for this, for this kiosk here, so.
Will they be able to have their greenhouse and things in the summer?
Uh, no. Because that would take up another...
What?
You have to go to the other store for that. Yeah, that would take up another 35 to 40 spaces, and, you know, that place, with the number of employees they have, you know, it's a lot of, in the busy times, it can, it can have some parking issues.
Yeah.
Uh, this was on the July 7th planning and zoning meeting for approval, and the commission recommended approval by a six to zero vote.
Thank you. Then I'd like to open the public hearing on this rezoning of Lot One, Lantern Park Plaza, from C2 to C2PUD2. From C2 to CPUD2 and the PUD site plan. Wanting some mouthful. Open the public hearing. Anyone here? Yes, please.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm Rachel Harris. I'm with LT Leon Associates. We're a civil engineering firm representing Hy-Vee, and I'm fully involved in this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have, have them.
Okay. We'll, I'll close the public hearing, then if they have any questions, I'll ask you then. Are there any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and consider the first reading of the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2021-1011, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot One, Lantern Park Plaza, Third Edition, from C2 arterial commercial district to CPUD2 commercial planned unit development district, two districts, introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Gross. Any discussion now? Questions for Rachel? Go ahead.
I'm just curious about what the timeline is.
I think they're looking to start construction as soon as approval, and, and I believe construction on these takes just a couple months. It's very quick, so, hasn't been. They've done a lot of kiosks in the Des Moines metro area, and they've not really impacted the stores a lot with the timeline, so.
And they've worked smoothly at the kiosks that have already been built and traffic flow and things, they've worked well?
Yeah, from what I, from what I know, one is in, that went in and is in full use is in Urbandale, and the, the store's been very happy with how the traffic has flowed through and the customers, the wait time has been decreased for all the customers as well, so.
Mayor, would this be one of those that we could condense the second and third consideration?
You're a mind reader. I was going to ask that same question, if it'd be appropriate. Let me ask the staff, is that, would that be appropriate? Do you think that...
I don't, I don't have any issue with it. I think we'll have time to get the development agreement. I want to make sure the first reading was done, and then, so I think we could have a, we could either do it this way, we could bring it back next meeting with a, with a second reading, a collapse motion, and a third reading, and we could just do it that way instead of having to vote tonight, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get going while the weather's good.
Yep.
And I think that's a great idea, too, just because we, you know, might want to encourage people to continue the online shopping.
Season is in full bloom, let's get that built out there.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes with Wynn absent. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, everybody.
Item, item eight is the third and final reading of the ordinance for Folsom Subdivision that would, will change the land use map for property located in the southwest quadrant of Second Street and First Avenue from corridor commercial to mixed use. Dodd?
Ordinance number 2021-1010, an ordinance amending the Corleville community plan to reflect certain property generally known as part of Lot 7, Folsom Subdivision, Corleville, Iowa, to be designated mixed use in place of corridor commercial use, introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes with Wynn absent. Item nine is the Corleville Town Center Repair Project. Our city engineer is sitting there, leading me to believe he's going to report on this.
I actually wasn't prepared to report on this.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I don't know.
I just assumed you were jumping up the...
Vicky's back there, though.
Oh, oh, okay. I mean, I could read the, read the note, but I thought that's why you were there. Vicky Rohrbach, our director of parking and transit.
So, on July 16th, we opened bids for the Town Center Repair Project. We received three bids. The engineer's estimate was $575,000, $575,500. Low bid came in at $747,000, which was Western. We have worked with them in the past, and then there were two additional bids, Saicon for $8,000, I'm sorry, $837,293, and from Gulf for $1,392,500. The low estimate was 30% over the engineer's opinion of cost. We have visited with our consultant as well as the contractors, and it's unfortunately a reoccurring theme, a lot of it has to do with the materials, some additional work they're going to have to do for shoring on the underside, which they hadn't necessarily originally anticipated. So at this time, we're just reporting on bids, we'll come back next council meeting for you to take action on this item. If you have any questions, I can...
Questions for Vicky? Just appreciate you staying on top of it and keep those pencils sharp. Okay, we'll move on then to item 10, which is Heartland Drive Pavement Repair Project 2021. And this is for a three-inch overlay and full-depth Portland concrete pavement removal and replacement on Heartland Drive. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. We only received one bid, once again. This time it was from LL Pelling Company with a bid of $123,431.95. The engineer's estimate was $125,120. So, obviously, pretty happy with the bid that we did receive, so we recommend awarding the contract to LL Pelling. And if they awarded the contract, this project has a completion date of September 17th.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Let's, item B, the resolution, please.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the Heartland Drive HMA Overlay 2021, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Wynn absent. Item C, same project, approving the contract and bond documents.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Heartland Drive Pavement Repair 2021 project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with when absent. Item eleven is the Iowa River Landing Improvements twenty twenty East Second Avenue project, which this is a, accepting the construction of improvements on East Second Avenue between East Seventh Street and East, East Ninth Street. Item A is I would entertain a motion to approve the pay estimate number eleven, the final one to Portson Construction. Moved by-
So moved.
Okay, by Gross, seconded by-
Second.
By Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. The pay estimates approved, all ayes. Now, item B is a resolution accepting the work.
Resolution accepting the Iowa River Landing Improvements twenty twenty East Second Avenue is completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Oh, by Dodds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes with when absent. Item twelve is the Twelfth Avenue Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation. This is also similar to the previous one, accepts the replacement of ash trees on, in the Twelfth Avenue right-of-way between Second Street and Sixth Street, and the rehabilitation of the streetscape. Item A is I'd approve, I'd entertain a motion to approve pay application number four.
I moved the, we, pay the application number four to John Harding for the Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation.
Well put. Moved by Dodds, seconded by-
Second.
By Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is approved to pay it. Now the resolution accepting the work, please.
Resolution accepting the Twelfth Avenue Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation is completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion?
I'd like to congratulate the Parks Department, Sherry, the streets, it looks beautiful. And what a nice variety of trees that we have now on Twelfth Avenue. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well put. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes with when absent. Moving on to item thirteen, the Fifth Street Social, this is, will designate an open container area for our, on Fifth Street, between Ninth Avenue and Sixth Avenue, and between seven oh eight and eight oh eight Fifth Street, for the upcoming Fifth Street Social on the evening of Saturday, August fourteenth. Don?
Resolution allowing use of public right-of-way for the twenty twenty-one Fifth Street Social, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes with when absent. Item fourteen is an easement agreement. This is with Mid-American Energy that will grant them access through the former Hawkeye Reddymick site on First Avenue to their power plant on that, on that land. Don?
Resolution approving an easement agreement with Mid-American Energy Company, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes with when absent. Item fifteen is a First Amendment to a parking agreement. This, this amendment is an amendment to the agreement we have with Watts Group for changing the total number of residential condominium units from twenty-two to twenty-five by converting four thousand square feet of office space into three condominium units, and we thereby reducing the number of leased parking spaces from seventy-two to sixty-five. This is for a space above the Ethan Allen Building there in the I R L on the second floor. They had fitted it out originally for office space, and after a year of attempting to lease it, there's still some available, so rather than leaving it set vacant, they wanted to turn it into condominium space. Resolution, please?
Resolution approving a First Amendment to a parking agreement with Watts Group I R L three LLC, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any just questions, discussion? Roll call.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes with when absent. City administrators report.
Good evening. I've got a couple of things for you. Next week on Tuesday night is National Night Out on August third, and if you live in Corleville and would like to register your, your block for a party or want some tips on doing that, go to corleville.org/nationalnightout. It is going to be very, very extremely hot the next couple of days. Some places you can cool off in Corleville would be the library, the recreation center, or the aquatic center. Also, it doesn't hurt to check on neighbors or friends who you know might be vulnerable. And finally, we do have a couple slots still open on our homebuyer assistance. You can get up to twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to help with buying a home, and that can go towards down payment or closing costs. You do have to be under eighty percent as a household for your area median income. For a family of four, that's seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it varies by the size of your family. So there's more information on that at corleville.org. So we'd love to have people take advantage of this. I know that the housing market is very tight right now, but if there's a place in Corleville that you're looking at, this could be a great opportunity. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, first two items on my list, you just covered, so I won't repeat those. I didn't have much else of anything else, except that today was another exciting day for our professional hockey team. At noon today, there was a press conference, news conference at the arena introducing the new head coach. His name is Jerry Fleming. Most recently, he was an assistant coach in a hockey league in Germany. And originally, he's from the Montreal area and played, you know, everything from high school through collegiate on to professional hockey, primarily in Canada, with the Montreal Canadiens and their farm system. He has experience, quite a bit of experience playing for the AHL team, which is the AAA, like the Iowa Wild is here, and a little limited experience also playing actually in the NHL itself. Very nice guy, very large man. He's six, seven, two hundred and forty pounds, so I look up to him. But he was, he had very nice things to say, and I could tell he was very sincere in that he had, of course, never in his life visited Corleville, Iowa, until he got picked up at the airport the night before last. And he said he couldn't even see much in the dark, but what the, what he could see, he was really impressed, and then he just couldn't believe it the next morning when he was able to see the Iowa River Landing and, and the arena facility, and then walking through it, he was equally impressed. So seems to have all the qualifications that they were looking for in a head coach, in terms of priorities of not just the players on the ice, but also being good citizens and good, good representatives of the city of Corleville. So it, I look forward to working with Coach Fleming. That's about it. I, we've already mentioned the Fifth Street Social, but again, that's coming up in a couple of weeks on August fourteenth, Saturday evening. It should be a fun time. It seems to get bigger and better every year, so I look forward to that. And the only other thing I'll mention is, at our next meeting, August tenth, I will not be here. My family from, my brother and his family from Massachusetts are coming, and we're gonna, they arrive on that day, and they're going to go right to our home up on Spirit Lakes. I'll be up there meeting them, so.
And I've moved the meeting to the Fifth Street Social.
There you go. Okay, city attorneys report.
Kevin seems to be doing well, Kevin.
I've got nothing.
All good? Okay. Committee and council members report. Mitch, with that remark, I'll let you go first.
Oh, I'm in trouble. Two things. Well, one, Ellen, if you'd pass this along to Kelly, I touched base with him and to Sherry. This is my, you know, the mayor has his annual gripes about lawns and this and that. I think mine is at the corner of Oakdale Road and Oakdale Boulevard at Twelfth Avenue and Oakdale, the, the hedges are so tall, when you're waiting, you cannot see the cars below them. I mean, we have so many kids on my street, and it's right across the street from the Dairy, or the Dairy Queen, the daycare center. It just, it's just dangerous. We've got to, we've got to take the shreds down, or shred the hedges a little bit.
They, they fixed it a couple of years ago on Oakdale Boulevard portion of it, by the Mercy Clinic? Is that, didn't that used to be a pro?
But they grew. I mean, they just-
Is this the same spot?
Yeah, same spot. Well, there's two spots. It's Oakdale and Twelfth, and then Oakdale Road and Oakdale Boulevard.
Okay, okay.
So, and the other thing I just want to just, just say is that we, two weeks ago, when we were meeting here, and all of you know that I, you know, I make my living in the school district, that at the school district board meeting two weeks ago, a gentleman approached the board and specifically two of the members of color of the, of the school board, and flashed a white power and supremacy signal. And a lot of people tonight are going to the school board meeting to show their support for the school district, and specifically for the two members of color. So I just wanted to make sure that we are, as a council, in solidarity with what happened, because I can't imagine being at a council meeting here and having that happen.
Somebody in the audience did that?
Yeah, went up and spoke, condemned a lot of the actions that the school district is doing, and then left with gesturing white power.
Wow, I didn't hear anything about that. That's terrible. So, ahead, Mayor, thank you. Okay, thank you. But we'll stay at that end. Megan, would you like to go next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the fire department this year for winning the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. So I donated, I try to donate every, every time we, we have the, the blood drive, and I, I have to be fair, I go every other year, Deb's giving me a dirty look. Because this year I did, I, last time I donated for the police, so this, this time I, I donated for the fire department.
You should do two pints at a time.
Well, I can't, I can't give out that much blood. So I try, I do try to be fair, but this year, yeah, the, the fire department was the winner. So congratulations, and, and, you know, regardless, the, the competition part is, is obviously fun, but it is really important to donate if, if you are able, donate blood if you are able to. The Johnson County Fair is in full swing right now. It actually ends tomorrow. I have been at the fair every day since it opened on Sunday, and it, it is just great to be, to be back in person and enjoying these, these events. I know that the Corleville Police and Fire were, were at the fairgrounds today for, for Kids' Day, so I've seen Chief Switzer out there every day since I've been out there, so lots of fun. Try to get out if you can. I know it's, it's going to be hot, but it'll be, it'll be, it'll be nice to, to get out and, and see the animals. Speaking of the heat, what are the pool hours tomorrow? Because I know that we have some limited hours for the pool due to the lack of lifeguards. What are those tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm going to have to look that up, because it, it does change most days.
It's, yeah.
Because of the lack of lifeguards, you're right.
And I think-
It's variable.
I think they're open at eleven, but I think at two to four is when they have the camps come in that are, and I think if you have a pass, they, if they have capacity and you have a pass, I think you can get in from the two to four, but then I, I think it's open till, back to the public from four to six or four to seven. Trying to think of-
Wednesday, there you go. He has it on the screen.
There we go. Oh, fabulous.
Mm-hmm. Ten thirty to one.
Okay. And then, so yeah, so there, so I would just, yes, make sure you're checking the, the city's website.
Why don't you read that, Megan, so people at home-
I can't read it. It's kind of hard to see at this angle with the laptop.
Open to the public, ten thirty, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Open to the public, ten thirty a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and four thirty to 7:00 p.m. Open by reservation for scheduled groups and splash parties and pool pass holders from 1:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then, I believe it looks like it's the same on Tuesday and Thursday.
And then it's open in the evening, too, right? Four thirty to seven?
What, Tuesday and Thursday, it's not open in the evening from four thirty to seven. Tomorrow it is.
Oh, yes, it's closed.
And then Friday, it's not open in the evening either. So tomorrow's your only chance to go four thirty to seven.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
The hot day. Yep.
And then, the only other thing I have is, you know, I just would encourage, again, everybody who is able to get vaccinated, you know, we are seeing a spike in cases. Again, you know, I have an eight-year-old son, this is, this is very scary. I was hoping that I'd be able to send him back to school confidently this fall, since he's been out of school since March of twenty twenty. So if you're able to get, you know, make, make sure that you're getting vaccinated, if you're eligible, and, you know, again, the CDC, I'll probably, I'll defer to Jill, I'm guessing you have some thoughts on this, because the guidance from the CDC just changed again today. So, yeah.
I just sent a big email out to our parents and our families to see, you know, they're all vaccinated at least, but when are we going to full blast our, enact our pandemic protocol again where we-
Yeah.
Check temps every-
You know, and, and we're talking about things like being back at the fair, we're talking about the Fifth Street Social, we're talking about National Night Out, we're being able to do all these things again, but we will not be able to if we have to shut everything down because of people not getting vaccinated who are eligible. So I would encourage everyone to do that, so we can keep gathering the way we've been able to this summer. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking at you, Jill.
I was going to say, are you sure? I come a little bit locked and loaded tonight. So I would like to talk about Governor Reynolds' Back the Blue Bill, and how that could potentially affect our citizens of Corleville. And I will admit that I wasn't very familiar with this until I started doing the research. This started with, those of you that probably more down on that end that follow Twitter, I am not a Twitter person, so the fact that it reached me means that it's a pretty hot topic online. A car was pulled over by Johnson County Sheriff's Department, an unmarked vehicle in Corleville. So it was videoed, posted on Twitter. It did not have any kind of state license plates, but the officer was at least in uniform. But there was a lot of concern about this, because apparently in the Back the Blue Bill, it is now illegal if you do not stop when you are pulled over. This was concerning to me. I mean, my daughter is forty, and I always taught her, you drive to a well-lit place where there are people and witnesses and safety if you need assistance. So this was very concerning to me, so I started kind of digging a little bit deeper. Deb Summers did some work for me. I finally contacted Sheriff Kunkel and spoke with him, and he said that this just adds unmarked vehicles to the eluding portion of the bill. Well, then, that put me to poor Kevin over here, so I started in on him, because I went to look up the Senate file, which, once it's been signed by the governor, is kind of hard to find. So he's been helping me, and I wanted to know what the definition of eluding was, which is very, very vague. And so I thought about that, as, as a fifty-nine-year-old white woman, how terrifying I think that would be for me if I was in a, in an area that got pulled over by an unmarked vehicle,